We'll have a presentation from Matt Shipley and Ron Wilkie on safety and security.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. We are excited tonight to present you a Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness update. This presentation is consistent with Board Policy 4 dot 170 and Strategic Plan Priorities 2 and 4. I do want to briefly mention, I think this is the first time, at least in recent history, that we've been asked to discuss with the Board our safety, security, and emergency preparedness. But this is a topic that definitely overlaps with a lot of discussions and conversations we have on a daily basis as administration and also with presentations that you see at the Board. So we'll overlap with some things that have been brought up in our annual facility presentations, that have been brought up during some technology updates, when we talk about training and personnel, you know, that'll overlap with our human resources annual updates, as well as even our social, emotional initiatives and some of the mental health work. That really, a core part of that's making sure our students feel safe and secure in their school environment. So while this is the first time we've had a time exclusively dedicated to this topic, we do believe a lot of this will overlap with previous discussions. With me tonight is Ron Wilkie, our Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. Ron has been with the district for about 18 months now after a long career in law enforcement. We've been fortunate as a district, we were one of the first districts to recognize the need to really have a full-time safety and security coordinator position. And we've been fortunate to fill that position with individuals who have a long background in law enforcement and also a passion for school and community safety. And so Ron has continued that tradition in the past 18 months. Before we get too far in the presentation, I do just want to emphasize that the safety and security of all members of our school communities is the district's number-one priority. And I want to be clear, this isn't my priority or Ron's priority or our administrative team at the district's priority. This really is lived every day in our school buildings. You know, I can't talk about the number of times where in a school building or talking with an administrator and safety and security comes up as one of the first things they want to talk about, whether it's a quick conversation about lunchroom setup and lunchroom tables, or a bigger discussion about, again, about curriculum or our educational philosophy. I mean, we do see this coming up over and over again in talking with our team leaders at the building level. And really, that makes our job, my job and Ron's job, a lot easier because we really are in a support position to support our people who are in our buildings every day and be a resource for them. So I do just want to speak to that strong safety and security culture that we have throughout the district. With that said, tonight's agenda, we'll start with a school safety overview, just a broad overview of some of the policies and procedures we have in place. Ron will then talk about some of the emerging school safety issues kind of at a national and state level, what we've sort of learned from some of those incidents that have occurred over the last year and how we've addressed our policies to make sure that we would be prepared if a similar incident happened at Indian Prairie. We will talk briefly about two incidents that happened at Indian Prairie this year, kind of a year in review, and our response to those. And again, what we've learned as part of the debrief process and how we've continued to improve our processes. We'll give an update on the security assessment that's tied to our overall master facility plan, which again, we'll be presenting in full to the Board in November. And then finally, we do want to end tonight just talking a little bit about community collaboration and how we will be making, continuing to make an effort to work with our community, recognizing that safety and security really involves everyone to ensure that we have a safe and secure school community. Before we get any further, I do just want to emphasize that we do have some confidentiality kind of ingrained in our safety and security plans. Really, that's to ensure that the plans work as intended, and again, to ultimately ensure that we're protecting all members of our school community. So while we'll talk in, again, talk a lot tonight about a lot of our procedures that are in place, there may be some details that we have to leave out or just have to be a little broad about to ensure that we're keeping some key parts confidential.
Thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity. You can see up on the screen some of our current safety procedures. This is not an all-encompassing list for sure, but I did want to point out three of them that are highlighted in red there that emerged this last school year. Two of them, I will go into a little bit later with the Lightspeed Alerts and the dismissal and arrival updates that we did. The last one on the bottom there is DoSmart, which is a new program that's an acronym for DuPage School Mutual Aid Response Team. And that is something that the School Safety Task Force with DuPage ROE has put together. So we worked on that all last year. We have a meeting tomorrow with the Advisory Committee, and I hope after that, that it is put into place for this year. What this really is, is following a model that law enforcement and fire departments utilize to utilize resources from surrounding neighborhoods when they realize that a district, in this case, has a critical emergency that expands the resources, staff, or any other output that they could have to contain or solve that emergency. So what we're looking to do is have all the districts of DuPage County work together, train together on the same set of rules, so that if we did need to call District 203 or Elmhurst or Wheaton or somewhere like that, they could send trained staff to help us out for possibly a reunification, or mental health crises, or some other large unfolding critical incident, and we could do the same for them. So that is a listing that I will refer to, those top two highlighted ones as we move into this. As Matt mentioned, we're going to talk a little bit on a national scale as we go through this and talk about some issues that severely impacted our school safety and kind of our security operations as we went through this. The first one is the hoax calls and swatting. And I'll refresh a little bit of that for anybody that is not aware what the swatting is. Essentially, it is a fictitious call called in by someone many times overseas that calls a police department and says that they have just witnessed an active shooter at, in most cases, a school, and they are requesting a large police presence. What they're looking for is a police presence, obviously, to show up with the school, unknown that this is happening, create trauma and fear when that happens among the students and staff, and has kind of a longer effect on that. So what we recognized last summer, the bomb hoax calls were coming into a lot of colleges around the United States. So we had an eye on that and wondered if that was going to repeat because we had one of those last May at one of our high schools. When school started in August and September, a few states started reporting multiple on a specific day and kind of regionally, multiple of these swatting calls. So in September, we started talking about it as a staff, saying we acknowledge that this is happening throughout the country. We assume as a Chicago metropolitan area that we are kind of a prime area for this to occur to us. So we began doing multiple trainings, tabletop discussions. We actually met with our dispatchers and police department and fire and came up with a plan that we thought we would use to minimize this, based on clues that we were getting from the FBI and other entities about what was going on with this. So we were fortunate enough to not have this happen to us. Illinois did experience it with a high school in Wheaton in February, so it went about five months. All throughout that time, we were talking with our schools, our district staff about what our plan was in place, we needed to be prepared, this was probably going to occur, maybe not in District 204, but somewhere in our area. So I will, I'm kind of foreshadowing for later on, but that's the first thing that came up last school year that we were really keeping an eye on, knowing how traumatic that could be if one of our large high schools had that happen to it, or a middle school. Of course, last July 4th, Highland Park had their tragedy, and as timing would have it, we actually had our annual review that the School Safety Drill Act mandates a couple weeks after that. So we were already prepared to meet with our first responders and our partners with that to discuss things. This, of course, was a big topic in it, and we shifted our focus to special events, off-campus events such as field trips and sporting events and parades, obviously, that happening during a July 4th parade. So we started really working on things that we could enhance when we looked at our plans and we needed a little bit more medical training. So we had that with our marching bands. We did more of that just over last summer and then just a couple of weeks ago with more training. We upped our crisis communication plans, so we issued more radios to be taken to these events. We issued more of a thorough crisis plan of rally points, local hospitals, what to do in certain situations. And then we recognized that we needed to even push that a little bit more. So you see on the Bullet Point Special Event Security Seminar, we contracted with DuPage Office of Homeland Security and Office of Emergency Management, and their former director, who was in FEMA, came out and provided instruction to our staff about three weeks ago so that we could be prepared for special events going into the new year. And Lightspeed Human Alert, we utilized that as well, mostly in this case, and I will get into that a little bit more, but this one and Harm to Others. So we are monitoring district technical or tech devices to make sure that nobody is doing searches that might lead to some kind of harm to our staff and students. The last one was the Ohio Train Derailment in East Palestine, Ohio, which occurred in February. And if you remember this one, almost 100,000 or a little bit more than 100,000 gallons of hazardous material was spilled. And why it's important to us is it severely impacted the school district. They have had to not have school for over a week, but the lasting impacts for people who didn't want to bring their students to school, whether it was safe to the extracurricular and after school, it really impacted their continuity of operations following that. So as timing would have it, you see on that, the screen there, the map there, which is a, the Burlington Northern Line that goes through Aurora and Naperville and is very close to some of our schools. We went to a Office of Emergency Management School Preparedness Workshop about three weeks prior to that, and that was a picture that was on the FEMA Director's screen, saying, are we all aware that we have a lot of hazardous materials that go through our area from Chicago to the rest of the United States? And they happen to pass close by some of our areas. So with that in mind, and with East Palestine coming, we knew that we needed to have some safety bulletins and plans in place for our schools that were in part, and really start honing in on the exercises that we do to make sure we have all our plans in place. So we did the safety bulletin. A few weeks after the East Palestine incident, we met with all of our local first responders, emergency management agencies, fire department hazmat teams, police, and said, what will we do if this happened in our neighborhood and how would we handle that? So we did a tabletop exercise, which is kind of an informal way of everybody explaining their roles and what resources we have. Each place from fire to emergency management talks about how they would handle it and how we would work together to have that unified command. And then you saw probably after that, there were several others because it was highlighting, heightened attention to it, another in Ohio, several others. So we did an incident management team at a district level, another tabletop to say, as a district management, how would we handle this, and then tied that into our other tabletops. So now bringing it more to a local level and to the incident that occurred at Granger Middle School, just as a summary for what occurred on that February morning. We had a 20-year-old male subject attempt to gain entry to our school, in fact, did gain entry as he was walking in, blended in with some of our students. And it was a very critical incident, but for the acts of our staff would have been a much worse incident, we believe. But what was abundantly clear to me and everyone else who was either on scene that day or took part in the debrief was that our staff acted phenomenally. They used the training that was given in School Safety Drill Acts and the reunification training and every other training that we've provided to them to not only confront this person, they recognized that they shouldn't be in the school, they contained them until the police were there, when he did not kind of obey any commands or wasn't making a lot of sense with what he was doing, gave fictitious answers of why he was there. And then to do a reunification and continue the continuity of education, by almost 400 students were released to their parents, and we still kept the school day going. And then, of course, to have the well-being of the staff and all the students at top of mind while we did these debriefs. So that being said, after every critical incident, we do an after-action review because we know that there's always things that we can do better and we can continually improve on that. So when we do an after-action review, we normally highlight three things. We say, what did we do well in this? What are some things that we can improve on? And what are the things we're going to do to make those improvements? So we first started with this, the school did their own after-action review, we did a district level when, with the school officials there as well, to provide the input from what they got. With this, we came up with some gaps that we identified that we thought we could address. So there's a couple of those that I won't discuss now, but the silver lining is that is we pushed those out to all the schools in the district and asked that all of them would comply with these new things that we learned from the Granger incident. But one of them that came out of it was that we knew that there was a crucial gap for arrival and dismissal of about 15 to 20 minutes, where we wanted our staff to pay attention to the students and staff coming to school, not be burdened by parents coming in and wanting impromptu conferences, not by appointments, things like that. So Dr. Tally, shortly after this, put out a directive to our staff and our students and our school community about giving that 15- to 20-minute break before school starts so we can fully concentrate on that, so that our school principals aren't talking to people out front, they're keeping an eye on who's coming up so we can confront people before they might get into our school. And I alluded to earlier, the swatting part, we thought we made it through the whole school year without getting this, but then in April, nine schools in Illinois were targeted. The time before, it seemed they did a alphabetical because they were all ZW and Y schools, and now this time it was kind of A schools. So Wobunzi Valley was the target for it. I'm happy to say that we had minimal disruption of that because we had literally been training for it for six months or more about what we were going to do. And it honestly worked to a T R S R O, heard the call come in, immediately called his partners with Aurora PD, recognized that the information, including teacher name, room number, what could happen, because it just so happened that it was a good day and there weren't as many students there for this, they were all false, so they knew that this was a false alarm. They utilized all the staff, exactly how we talked about, and I think you're all aware probably, the limited disruption, we didn't have students off of school or parents super upset because of this, because of the way that it was handled. So again, kind of that effective collaboration between us and our police departments. You saw from that earlier picture, that was the special response team from Wobunzi Valley, and they were in Wobunzi Valley this summer, working on that specific tactic of what would we do and how would we slow down and make sure we used the shield and made sure that we didn't impact the students as much as possible. In the swatting incidents, they're hoping the police will barge in and kind of go through and make a lot of noise and do maybe a more typical police response, and we learned that that's not what we wanted to do. And finally, Lightspeed notifications. So we've had these notifications that point out information that comes from our District 204-owned devices and searches that are happening on them, but we haven't had a human review, which was rolled out by the Lightspeed Corporation this past school year. What that means is that trained specialists typically from law enforcement or education are actually checking out flagged of these searches or posts. And we only had it for two, we had it for self-harm and Harm to Others. The overwhelming majority of all of ours were self-harm. Again, the overwhelming majority were something related to reading Shakespeare, and it said something about suicide or dying or others. But there were some that were definitely things that we needed to address and look into and provide mental health crisis for, and attention to these students. So we did get those. We got a lot more that weren't legitimate, but we did check in with them anyway, with school staff. So how this works is if there's a threat deemed to be imminent, they will immediately call the school principals, myself, and a number of others so that we can get police involved or fire. This happened a couple of times, Friday night at 10 o'clock, and somebody posted something. So we had the ability to provide resources at that time. And then a high alert is something that mentions, as I said, maybe a quote that could be attributed to a school project, and we check on that anyway, and that is why they have the human review. If 20 of those come in, they see clearly this was a classroom assignment. If one of them comes in, then they alert us through an email that we might need to check that out. That goes directly to the principal, the assistant principal, myself, and a couple other people within the district staff to make sure that we're checking on those as well. And anytime that we come to one of those, as the last bullet mentions, the students are spoken to, and if they need any mental health or crisis, you know, help at that point, then we provide that.
All right. So we've mentioned our master facility plan probably at almost every meeting here, but just wanted to take a chance to again, talk about it and talk sort of exclusively about the safety and security assessment piece of that. We're working with the architectural firm of Whiting Company, as well as the firm Answer Advisory to do this work. And so the next two slides are kind of directly from Answer Advisory as they presented to us their work plan, and so just wanted to spend a few minutes walking through it. One of the things we really liked about their approach to it was this concept of layers of protection. So even though we said we were doing this as part of a master facility plan, the different layers or the different items that they're going to look at through that process or have looked at through that process, really go on to encompass a variety of pieces, right? So it's not just the school site and the building design that maybe is, would be a core facility assessment piece, but it's also the physical security equipment, the technology, our school personnel, the training, the exercises and the drills we do, as well as a full policy and procedure review as well. So we really felt that this was a comprehensive approach to look at safety and security. And I think what's appealing for us is we start to work through sort of the back half of this process, and we start looking at recommendations and what we can do to continually improve our safety and security throughout the district, is that all these different layers have different mechanisms to improve, different, you know, potentially different timelines to implement. So where's maybe a significant physical security improvement may take us several years to properly fund and design and build. Some of the security policies and procedures piece, we'll be able to implement on a quicker time scale. Again, I think we've, the initial feedback is that we're generally pretty strong in some of those areas. We've talked a lot tonight about our reliance on training, exercises, and drills, and the initial feedback's been that we're very, that we're very good in that area. But again, those are some areas that we can continually roll out to our staff, to our buildings on a fairly quick timeline, as maybe we have a longer-term goal to work towards some of the physical security needs. The second piece, just to walk through what their process has been so far. So it has included an onsite security assessment of all Indian Prairie properties. These assessments have been completed, they were completed during the spring 2023 period. So our team and their team is currently processing that, those recommendations, and then are going to incorporate that into that master facility plan. Just to talk through what that assessment process included, in addition to a full walkthrough of the building and looking again at the actual site and the physical infrastructure, it included interviews with our principal and other members of the leadership team, building operations staffs, our airmark custodians and our maintenance teams, as well as district-wide leadership as well. Looked at a review of documented security concerns and historical incident data. So they really looked at this being a holistic approach, seeing the school not just as, you know, one building, but as a community within a larger community of Naperville and Aurora, right? So recognizing that what may be right for our community and the recommendations that are ultimately going to come out of this are going to be different than it they would be if it was a similar building in a rural setting or in a more urban, you know, city of Chicago sort of setting. Again, did a full campus walkthrough. That included a lot of video, a lot of images. At many of our facilities, they took drone footage, and we were able to watch arrival and dismissal with, you know, from a couple thousand feet up, which was really exciting, and I think had some good insights into traffic patterns and things like that. So again, a comprehensive walkthrough is part of this process as well. And then ultimately, the goal is to use what they refer to as their security and resiliency score, our SHIELD, to really identify where we are at and what we can do to really drive improvement. So trying to take a lot of data and really boil it down to a single score or number with then a few key mitigating items that can help improve that score. And again, as part of their process, they're providing full recommendations and cost estimates that can help improve that our SHIELD score. I do want to mention, we are incorporating this into our master facility plan, that'll be presented to the Board in November. However, we're not waiting until November to start working on some of these recommendations. So we're, next month, we're presenting our Summer of 2024 Capitol Plans, and we will already have some of these recommendations built into that work. Again, as well as seeing the opportunities on some of those operational items, policy items that we can kind of improve in real time. I do want to talk, the specific item that, again, a little foreshadowing for next month, but we do, as part of this, we've seen the need to really be able to improve our doors. And again, doors, not just, you know, thinking of the door itself, but the access point. And so as, again, thinking of this layered approach or thinking of it comprehensively, how do we incorporate some new technology into the door so that instead of using a traditional lock and key, we can use electronic system that then, again, ties into some of our personnel management so that we can, you know, go to more of a key entry system, monitor when people are entering and exiting, be able to potentially narrow the windows that different individuals are allowed access? So that, for example, if you have a coach who needs access to a specific location at 4:00 in the morning because he's the swim coach, and, you know, we know how crazy our swimmers are getting there early in the morning, instead of having to give him a key that's going to work 24/7, we can give him an electronic access that'll work from 4:00 to 4:15 or, you know, similarly in the evening. So just looking at really being able to, again, take that comprehensive approach, the sort of different areas that we can address, and provide a solution that, again, maybe we wouldn't have found if we were just looking at the physical plant and physical security So finally, this evening, just wanted to close by talking about our work towards community collaboration. And we do want to emphasize, I think, you know, in our role, we tend to take a lot on ourselves. Again, we mentioned how critical, everybody in our schools believes that the safety and security of our students are, but we do need some help from our community to ensure that we have safe and secure schools. Just want to talk through a few items that in our mind are pretty straightforward, and we hope our community can assist us in, again, ensuring safe and secure environments. So the first is this concept of if you see something, say something. One of the things that did come out of the after-action reports with the Granger incident that was a little discouraging and we need to work with is we did hear from a few students and even parents, you know, that they did see an individual who wasn't acting like a member of the school community, that was approaching students and outside, and again, nobody recognized them as a member of our school community, but that wasn't reported until to administration until after the individuals inside our building. So when we talk about an incident that, again, was a significant incident for that school community, there was a potential for that to really have been resolved outside the school facility if individuals had said something. And, you know, when I hear that, you know, they weren't acting like a middle school student, I mean, that does take a lot of work to not act like a middle school student, right? So the fact that we were able to identify that and not report it, again, just speaks to that need to continually reiterate that message. So again, asking this evening, and we'll continue to reiterate that message, that communication is critical, and if you do see something, please say something to either our administration or, again, if it's local police or other groups, that is critical to protect our community. Again, we do ask that families review our district and school communications. We'll have, I know we tend to have a lot of communication come out, especially this time of year before we start the school year, but we have a lot of critical safety information in there. As Ron mentioned earlier, we are asking our community to be a little bit mindful of when they visit our schools, for example. So we just want to make sure that our families are staying up to date, and when we do make changes to our procedures, that they're aware of that. Again, our communities do have notification systems, you know, Napre Notify and Aurora similarly have systems where you can sign up to get general community information as well, and we do encourage all members of our community to enroll in those subscriptions as well. The last two points, you know, we did as part of our security assessment really identify that the amount of unscheduled drop-offs and unscheduled visits we see at our schools, particularly in our elementary schools, really has become a hindrance towards maintaining a secure school facility. So what we want to encourage parents to be involved in our school community as volunteers, we do want to work towards having that be more scheduled and, again, just more in a way that can be predicted by our schools. You know, we've heard a lot about that front entrance really being a vulnerable point for us, just with the amount of parent drop-offs, deliveries, you know, forgotten lunches, again, parents looking for some impromptu meetings with the principal or administration. So that... with the principal or administration. So that that is an area that we'll be looking to to communicate around and and improve this school year. And similarly, we know we have a significant vulnerability at arrival and dismissal, and a lot of that's tied to just the amount of traffic and volume we have in our neighborhoods. We know most of our schools were built as neighborhood schools with the intention that students would walk to school, and we'd have limited bus or or car traffic outside our schools. So now that we we're in an environment where we do see more traffic, where we do see more parent drop offs and pickups, you know, that that creates challenges. Are we just don't have the infrastructure to deal with that and to really handle all that traffic in a in a safe manner? So again, just asking our our community to be mindful of that as they're driving around our schools near those arrival and dismissal times. You know, we we believe these asks are are reasonable and also tie directly to our portrait of a graduate, and really tie tie most critically to that citizenship concept, right? We we recognize that, again, maintaining safe schools, schools that provide a an ideal learning environment for all our students requires all of us to to chip in and make that possible. So we really want to tie to that that citizenship concept. Although, you know, I'll point out, we do see some some ties to communication, to to adaptability and flexibility as well. So just just tying this this ask really to to that portrait of a graduate. And again, as mentioned, we will be working on increasing our safety and security communication, both through district and school channels this fall. We have a great opportunity with School Safety Week, and I believe early October, to do a lot of that, as well as through our back. So just to conclude this evening, we will continue to support safe and secure school communities. Again, I just mentioned, we will have continual communication, again, welcome back videos, and then we will also be offering a virtual parent university this fall, with safety and security being the topic. Similar to what we documented tonight, we will continually to review our national, state, and local trends. We'll continue to do full debriefs and after action reviews of any incidents that occurred in Indian Prairie. And then finally, we do, as mentioned, we do look forward both in September and November to talk through our full security assessment and how we have used that to develop recommendations for our master facility plan. And so with that, we are both available for any questions from the board.
All right, Mr. Rising, I'll start with you.
So first of all, thank you, Matt, for starting out and kind of discussing how we are kind of giving an overview, because I've often told parents that we can't discuss in detail what a lot of our emergency procedures are and plans are, because we don't want that getting out in the public for obvious reasons, because bad people look to find, you know, out information. So thank you for for mentioning that. One of the questions I do have is, is there a way we can get better? Let me preface why I'm asking this question. Obviously, it it goes without surprise that that parents are have a heightened awareness of security issues within our schools, from what they're seeing on the media. But obviously, everybody wants to be vigilant and and on high alert, and we all should be all the time. But do you think we could do a better job of defining certain things? Because I I feel like when we send communications out, and I don't want to step on our communication director's toes too much, but I feel like sometimes there's a misunderstanding of what a lock in place is versus a lockdown. And and people hear lock in place, and they're freaking out, when it's just probably an internal issue with a kid who's having a mental health crisis, but everybody thinks there's an intruder in the area, and there's, I think, some we need to better define what those things are for our community. Did you can I just respond to that quick?
And and I'll respond to that. And thank you, like, setting that one up for us, because Lisa Barry and I and Jeannie Dyna have been working on that. That's going to be a new addition to our website this year, as well as the welcome back videos with some helpful information and the parent university. So we're going to talk about things like the reunification process and what we require of parents when we do that. We know we had two reunifications, both school-led this past semester. So we know that that is going to occur and probably will in the future. We did a good job at both of them, but we need the parents to understand that as well. As far as our classroom action guide, kind of what you're referring to, we have an Alice response, which is what happened at Granger in that incident. We also have a hold in place and teach for something occurring inside the school, and a secure the building and teach for something occurring outside. Both of those are not necessarily complete emergency situations. They are just trying to err on the side of caution. So I completely agree with what you're saying, and we can get that information out. So when we do send home a secure the building and teach, it was probably because one of our local police departments had something going on four blocks away, or there was a dangerous animal running around that we just didn't want people to go out. But
And you understand, you understand the parents' concern, because there needs to be a rubric for parents, so they can say, because we are sometimes, and we have to be, sometimes very vague in the way we communicate. And the principals usually communicate, or the district does, but most oftentimes, the principal will communicate to their parents' community, but for reasons of, I'm assuming, and this is what I tell parents, investigation that's currently taking place, we have to sometimes be very vague. And if there's no rubrics for parents where they can go, oh, lock in place, oh, that's just something that's happened internally, okay, I can relax now. Because what happens is social media. And what happens is freak out among the community, and if it's in an area that I'm in and or a board member's in, we get about 50 different calls saying what's going on. And we could we oftentimes, Dr. Tally will let us know, but we can only, we can't say too much either if there's something going on. So again, that rubric would be wonderful. And then I will also add on to that is that when the communication goes out, it would be nice to be able to say, like, and I know we often do this, but even being clear would be great, like, everything is okay, we will share more details with you when the time is appropriate, but understand, this is also an investigation, this involves minors, and therefore, see, parents want to know everything. And sometimes we can't tell them everything because it's an issue that involves a minor, and we can't share that information. So again, I think just better understanding for the community about that would be incredible. So thank you. And then the last thing, I also, I believe this, if you see something, say something. In my tenure as a parent in this district, that has been so invaluable. Like, I I think 90% of what happens, we usually hear from other parents or other students. And I think we just need to keep pounding that as much as crazy, because that's where we're going to hear something, because a kid's going to see something on social media, or a parent's going to see it. And they can't be afraid, like, oh, I don't want to bother the district. No, I'm sure the principals and you, Ron, would rather know than not know.
Well, thanks. And and we have many avenues for that, from our tip line, anonymous tip line, to just contacting anybody. And I would go, and I always do when we talk about that, as I go one step farther, you see something, say something, or do something. Okay? And in this case, that that Matt referenced, just maybe telling a staff member that something needed to be addressed outside might have been changed that whole perspective. And to circle back at your your first point, we actually have a what we call a classroom action guide that has some specific, like, if you're a hold in place and teach, it's normally there's a medical emergency within the building, or there's a student that is having some difficulty, and we just want to give them some space. So we can put that out as well. There's nothing proprietary or that would impact us.
And maybe it needs to get out to the PGAs and stuff like that, too, so they can spread it as well, you know?
Sure, we could certainly put that out.
Thanks.
Thank you both, Matt and Ron. Excellent presentation. I so appreciate, Ron, you having an opportunity to just review. I I think, you know, the transparency of us talking about situations that occur in our district, it is, it it can be difficult, but so important for us to share, because, as we well know, different, once, once word starts spreading, sometimes things aren't as accurate. So I truly appreciate us addressing those situations and sharing that. And Matt, I I get so excited. It's it's almost exciting when I look at the growth, when we've talked about our master facilities plan in in over the past couple years, what we've had to, you know, what we've talked about and and the focus. But I so appreciate you and your team and administration finding an organization as answer that looks comprehensively, not just at making sure, understanding, you know, how safe our facilities are from the construction standpoint, but looking at the entire security. Because I know you've talked a lot about our community from a school community standpoint, but our schools are in neighborhoods. So things that impact our schools impact the community, those neighborhoods. So it's not just the school community. And that's why it's so important for us to be able to understand what's going on and taking a look comprehensively at this. I will be so looking forward to hearing and seeing the what you have to share with us as we go forward. But I think this is critical, truly important for us to begin to look at how we can, from a facility standpoint, make sure that our schools are safe, because it impacts our students, our staff, our community as well. So thank you.
Great. Yeah, no, we're 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 excited to, so.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you for this very informative presentation. I also appreciated, Ron, you walking us through some of the more more recent incidents and just it just gives us a a better appreciation of what all is involved when we talk about security. So that was that was very informative. Thank you. Back to member Rising's comment about being more clear in our communication. Are we also, do we have it written in different languages to ensure our parents who where English is not their main language would be able to understand? Is that something we're thinking about?
Bring that up with our communications director.
Great.
We do have a new language line that we put into play just for this year. In my previous position, we used it for almost two decades. So I'm very excited for that, for just interpretation and the ability to get onsite for any language that we could, we know we have a lot of language and dialects spoken in in District 204, and this will be, I I really think, a little bit of a game changer when talking with parents, and maybe that had some difficulties with communications before or over the phone. So that will be a great plus for our district this year, too.
Yeah, wonderful, especially with security, you know, just another barrier that we want to remove. And to slide 10 with, let me get to that slide here. Regarding light speed, I also appreciated your explanation on on how that works. I I remember asking Dr. Tally some specific questions about this. I was just curious, when we do go out and offer assistance, and and I I probably should have asked this earlier in an email, but and you don't have to answer this now, but how was, what was the reaction like to those who received assistance? Was that welcomed? Or what's the process like?
Well, there's two different timing that we got. One's called imminent, and one is called high risk. And so the high risk, in their estimation, is the you should do something about this within a 24-hour period. That's generally their recommendation. We, of course, don't wait on that. But if we get an email at two in the morning that some student was on there, it probably is not getting addressed until that next morning. But we had, I I looked at it, I I believe about 20 throughout the year, that were phone calls that we received, which meant that they felt, from the human review angle, that this was imminent. Every single one of them was self-harm related, not harm to the schools. So we didn't have to go down that way of of stopping some act of violence on our schools. Many of them were in off-school hours and necessitated the principal either to call me. We conferred. Most of the time, we contacted the local police, who did a check well-being on the house, and met with the parents and the student. Many of those did did, you know, seek help and and seek guidance. And we were kind of in the better, safe-than-sorry camp. And some explained it in a way that we were comfortable with. But we are are are, without getting too much into it, we know that some of the things that we maybe wouldn't have seen had we not had light speed and not been able to address. But I did not hear of any negative reactions that we received on it. Some, yes, are false positives. Sometimes you ask a student, and they say, yeah, I was reading Othello or something, and I was writing about that. And we get it, okay. But we want to make sure, right?
Sure.
And then other times, they did legitimately say, yes, they could use to talk with somebody. And then our school social workers or psychologists were involved with that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Mr. Kurubis.
Page four. I love seeing kind of the coordination that we're doing with, you know, the local law enforcement, and the fire departments, and the emergency response personnel. You can kind of see some of the tension in what we're doing and what is in here with restricting access after the school starts and having parent volunteer security assistance. You know, they might be manning the front desk, or they might be, you know, volunteering in the classroom. And so there's, there's tension there with trying to keep it secure, but then allow the parents to come in and help. So I I kind of appreciate the tension there. The, you know, you it's mentioned the the safety drills we we do here, and that in and of itself is rather extensive, with having to do, you know, three fire drills, a tornado drill, a bus evacuation, and a a school shooter drill. So we have, you know, a limited number of school days, and we're still doing all these drills during school time to try to educate student staff and and our local departments on on kind of how to how to respond appropriately. And then it even expands further from beyond these things to, you know, our ability to just close schools completely for severe emergencies and safety issues. And then small things that you see where, you know, the fire alarms on the walls and the defibrillators, and when we test for lead. So there's all these things that are involved in safety, to make sure that students and staff can go to school in a safe environment, that, you know, it's not just a plan, it's not just implementing, but we've got to have the resources there, we've got to have the the tools. So I, this is like a small snippet of what we're doing, and you can keep adding to it and drilling down to see the extra stuff that is in the district's plans, the school's plans. So that's just a a comment. On page seven, I'd like to kind of delve a little bit further into the the train derailment. You know, we've got kind of major train tracks in our school district, north, south, east, west, right through smack through the middle. And and Naperville has a history of a major train accident. 1946, 45 people were killed when the passenger train was stopped, and the other one didn't slow down at all. And even, so it wasn't a major spill, wasn't toxic, that slowed down. But it impacted the community greatly, and something like that could happen again. So we've we're moving a lot of metal stuff through our district at high speeds. I'm surprised that we've been this safe that long, so kind of kudos to what's being done to to keep it that way. But that is definitely a risk. So I'm glad to see that we are trying to be part of planning for a solution that hopefully we never have to deal with. And that's it. Besides looking forward to the facilities assessment report, I probably been the longest beater on the table, and it started with the deferred maintenance, and it has grown immensely to include a lot of other things as appropriately it it should have. So thank you for your work. And Ron, we can discuss this later at the next meeting at the airport we have.
Yeah.
Thank you for all of this information as a parent.
As a parent, this is incredibly reassuring. And I will remind people to come and search for this presentation when they have questions for, you know, what are we doing in the district? Because when I walked by this school, this is what I saw. Not that we want to discourage people from sharing what they saw, but sometimes some of these concerns can be addressed just simply by having this presentation. So thank you for that. A lot of my fellow board members have already brought up questions I had, which is great. My only other comment is on the very last part about limiting school drop-offs. And I would say, as a parent, the more that this can be repeated by the principal and the PTA, as, these are the rules for the school, and if your child forgets their lunch, this is what will happen. I think the more effective it has potential for being, there will still be people who don't follow that always, but I think lots of parents just need a reminder, why it's a concern, why it is problematic, not just that, you know, we just don't want you in the building, but there's a reason behind it. And I think when people sometimes get that reminder, they're more willing to cooperate that way.
Yeah, I'll just, a quick comment, that, you know, this was a little eye-opening for me when we did, again, part of the security assessment. This really did rise to the top as a concern for a lot of our building leaders, a lot of our principals. And again, I, we have a community group that Ron meets with periodically, that has voiced concerns about safety and security issues, and has asked to meet with our team, and it's been a good resource. And this was one thing that they, you know, again, was a little eye-opening for me when a community member said, well, what are you asking us to do? You know, because you spend an hour talking about all that you've done, and man, you know, there's some tension there, and again, a lot, these are, these are parents who are looking for reassurances and are a little concerned, and rightfully so, and at times it gets a little defensive, or a little tense potentially when we talk about these things. But, again, to be said, well, what are you asking us to do? And so, you know, we're hopeful that, again, just by reiterating this message, and, again, not to say that we, you know, want to prohibit drop-offs, or say, you know, there's no reason to drop off, obviously, there's medications and things that are maybe a little critical, but, again, when we talk about teaching resilience and teaching flexibility and adaptivity, you know, having a student learn that they can eat the school lunch and will survive could be a valuable lesson, or, again, if we want to encourage people to remember their lunch, one way to do it is to have them forget it one day and not be bailed out by mom or dad. So, just trying to think of how we can build these into not just, hey, this makes our community safer, but this also does tie back to some of the life lessons we're trying to incorporate in our portrait of a graduate.
As a parent who has been reminded occasionally by a staff member not to be a rescuer, I'm sure my fellow board members are shocked to hear this, there are benefits to our students as well, so thank you for reminding me again. This is school year start.
Just to follow up a little bit, too, we are doing a back-to-school message, and it's meant to be a little bit lighter, but to hammer home some of these points, like no tailgating, and let's limit the amount of, and kind of some of the dangers that go along with crossing guards, and parents getting a little over-exuberant driving to school, because now we have three times as many cars pulling up to our schools that we ever had, and it's just not, as Matt alluded to, it's not designed for that. So we have issues there that we need to make sure that we take care of, and parents can be a big help with that, with both driving and others. So we will do that, that back-to-school message, and try to make sure that our staff, which they've indicated to us, and of course, we want, that their full support and their full attention is on the security of the building, and not the 50 parents who come in for the first hour and bring things over. Not that that's not important, but they've got things that they need to do to make sure the school day gets off safe and secure.
Ms. Gents?
I want to thank you guys for this great presentation, and also just the simple work that's being, I mean, put in. Safety and security is an issue that's always changing, so I so appreciate the efforts that are being put in for all of our students. I had just a couple of questions, and honestly, they're really piggybacking what's already been said, and actually, what you just mentioned, Ron. The welcome-back message, will that include a reminder about the new arrival dismissal procedure? Because parent leaders were very confused slash not confused, not loving it, at the end of the last school year, so just maybe a reminder to them?
We will make sure we put that in.
Excellent, thank you.
And the reason why we did it.
Yes, and again, I know when they hear it, yes, it's hard to really be angry about it, it makes total sense. I think there was just confusion for parents that volunteer a lot in the school, kind of how that worked. So, that's wonderful. And then, back to what Mr. Rising was saying, was, as far as like the line of communication that we'll be working on to get messages out, you know, about incidents and understanding of the language, obviously, you keep it very vague. Is it going to be, though, at least for the school community, those parents surrounding it, a more immediate message? Because, especially in high schools, it's, parents seem to hear about something five seconds after, you know, kids are finding out, so they'll, and then they kind of spread it in what they've heard, or, it's a horrible game of telephones. So I know I had spoken with Jeannie, and Doug, actually, throughout the year, about being, having somebody that would be that almost point person, to be able to get an immediate message out, just even, like, everyone had said, very vague.
I don't want to necessarily speak for Lisa Berry and Jeannie, but I know we have had discussions on that initial acknowledgement. Oftentimes, when we have something happening, we are trying to partner with our liaisons, typically that's the police department, so we have this unified message, right? Because we don't want to, even in the Granger incident, we took some flak, because ours was a little different than Aurora PD's, even though they said the same thing, people questioned, and it really was just both sides. So, I think we have been talking about the crisis communication, and just an initial acknowledgement, that we know something's happening at XYZ school, and we're aware of it, we're working with that particular partner, and we will provide an update as soon as possible. So that's something that we are going to look to do, just to make sure that everybody knows, like, this is the channel we want you to be tuned in to get that, not the social media account from somebody else who's just posting it. Go to here, or wherever that may be, if we drive them to our website, if we push them to our social media pages. I don't know, Lisa, is there anything you want to add to that? Okay, so that's kind of our plan going forward.
Oh, that's great. No, that will be so good.
Let me just add also, unfortunately, because of social media, be careful that what we put out as a school district, which can be picked up by the news, has to be as accurate as possible.
Right.
And so, we want families to understand that we will get the information out as quickly as we can, but they have to give us a moment of time.
Right.
So that we can make sure the information is accurate, because if we give out misinformation, then it comes back on us. And so, school, parents should know that we will be getting out the information as soon as possible. But there is, it's a delay from when their children sends them a message that may not be true.
Usually, it's not accurate, no.
So I just want that to be known.
No, and that's a very good point, too, honestly. So maybe as that's coming along, parents hopefully will understand that it will be coming out very quickly. So whatever they think they're hearing, just sit on that and wait to see what's actually said. Thank you, guys. That was it, that was easy, there we go.
Well, thank you for all of the work here. It's, I appreciate the comments that you made to start the presentation, two in particular. One is that safety and security is a top priority for the district, for everyone that works here, for the board members. It is a constant concern for us, and I hope we never have to witness some of the things that you read about that have happened in the country. And also, the, that we can't give out all the details of what we do here. I mean, you gave a lot of information here that's very helpful, and hopefully lets people have a better comfort level with what we are looking at, what we have in place. But, you know, we're not going to tell them all of the details of what we are doing in our schools. I think sometimes it's frustrating for us, because, well, we do mention safety and security a lot in different parts of our work as a board, or in presentations, whether it's budget, the facilities plan, whatever, but it's not constantly discussed. And sometimes when people hear us say, yeah, we really want new landscaping out there, they get frustrated, like, what, you know, what about safety and security? It's like, it's always there, but we also have other needs also in the district, so it was important for you to say those words, and I'm repeating them, that the board always considers safety and security a top priority. So, thank you, I think you did a great job presenting the information. I do appreciate also the instances that you pulled out to say, here's some things that happened last year, and what we're doing to make sure that we're prepared. So, thank you.